Platform Republicans PAC will be allotted five minutes on behalf of their groups. The remaining individuals will be allowed up to two minutes each. I'm informed we've had a few people who have signed up to give hearing, uh, to give comment at the hearing today. If we have time, uh, after the people that have signed up in advance, we will allow those people to provide comment as well. Board Secretary Sybil Child is the official timekeeper. Uh, we actually have a timer that you'll see on the screen that will show you how much time you have, you have left, so you can watch that as you speak. Public comments should be directed to the board's rule and not Section 53G 10-205 or other legislative action. We do not plan on taking board member questions during this hearing. Angie Stallings is the USBE staff member who is familiar with the rule at issue and who can respond to requests for information by those in attendance in accordance with the rule. As hearing officer with the assistance of the board secretary, I will prepare a hearing record in accordance with the Utah Administrative Code and transmit that record to the board for consideration. At the conclusion of this meeting, interested persons will have the opportunity to provide written comments. We request that written comments be emailed to rule dot comments at schools dot utah dot gov by close of business on October 31st. All written comment will be included in the hearing record. All right, Ms. Wilber, you can go ahead, just push the, uh, little person on the, on the mic machine and you should be able to go.
Thank you. My name is Monica Wilbur. I represent Higher Ground, which is challenging the Utah State Board of Education's board rule R 277 700 74 on the grounds that it violates conscience and religious belief, which are essential to freedom. Utah's faith-based founding saw this area settled by Mormon pioneers fleeing from religious persecution. Today, Utah is home to many religions. Seventy-three percent of Utahns are Christians. Jews, Muslims, and other faiths comprise another seven percent of the population. This means close to eighty percent of Utahns profess religious belief. Conscience is universal. Our Creator has given everyone a conscience, even if some would have us ignore that fact. So let's increase the number of people impacted by the rites of conscience and religious belief to one hundred percent. And of course, that includes the children in our public schools. Children do not check their consciences at the school doors. Our Utah Constitution is unequivocal on the special protections that the rites of conscience and religious belief merit from the state. In Article One, Section Four, it states that the rites of conscience shall never be infringed. And in Article Three, it states that perfect toleration of religious sentiment is guaranteed, and that the state shall establish a system of public schools free from sectarian control. The word sectarian isn't applied exclusively to religion, and also applies to secular instruction that is biased, intolerant, and doesn't allow for deviation. HB 348 was a bill that strengthened a student's right to not participate in any aspect of school that violated a right of conscience or religious belief. It passed with a legislative supermajority in 2023. It realigned state law 53G 10-205 with the state constitution. It established that a school cannot punish or discriminate against a student for refraining from participating in a violation of his or her own conscience, and that a school cannot override a student's conscience. This last point is important because the board just amended a rule to require a student to master core standards for graduation, even if those very core standards are what violates a student's conscience or religious belief. R 277 700, as amended, infringes on conscience, law, and the Constitution. First, it must be very clear that the USBE had no authority or expertise to amend R 277 700 in the way they did. The board's own legal policy advisor said in 2019 that the board needed to repeal the previous rule it had made for 53G 10-205 on constitutional issues in schools. Let's watch the video.
We'll move on to 7.5, which is R 277 105.
Just a quick background on this. In speaking to Assistant Attorney General Buse on this, this rule was originally written to give guidance to some of the smaller LEAs on what some of the requirements are under the Constitution for free speech and some, and student rights under the Constitution. The, the requirements set forth in this rule are all spelled out in the Constitution and in case law that's been set forth, and it's really not something that's the board's authority to create these, to create these requirements or not create these requirements. The rule isn't necessary to protect these rights. Uh, there are in other statutes and in the Constitution, uh, is the feeling there. Generally, we try not to repeat what the law is in other places in board rule, and so for this reason, uh, in consultation with the AGs, uh, we're recommending that, uh, the board repeal R 277-105.
Given this confession, it's a mystery why this board was even allowed to amend R 277 700 as it did, since it now creates requirements and interprets student constitutional rights, the very thing the board's legal counsel said the board didn't have the authority or the expertise to do in rule. The Law and Licensing Committee was told this in June when USBE staff wrote another rule to substantially reinterpret and infringe on 53G 10-205. That rule was stopped in its tracks, but just two months later, members of the Law and Licensing Committee returned with amendments to R 277 700 that did the very thing they had already been informed that they have no authority or expertise to do, which was to interpret how schools should handle student constitutional rights. This fact alone is enough to disqualify the board's R 277 700 amendment. Now, let's move to the second reason this amendment is unconstitutional. Second, the board's R 277 700 amendment continues to infringe on conscience law and the Constitution by telling schools they can only honor a claim on conscience if it can be reasonably accommodated according to the conditions listed in the definitions that apply to all the parental rights law. Under this law, a school need only accommodate conscience if fourteen different conditions are all met. You can see them on the screen. Those conditions include balancing the educational needs of other students, teacher workload, the efficient operation of the school, et cetera, et cetera. There isn't a single claim of conscience or religious belief that couldn't be overridden by the state, thanks to this provision in Parental Rights Code. Parents are being played if they think reasonable accommodations means the schools are accommodating them. Having to meet all of these conditions to honor student conscience puts R 277 700 in a direct collision course with the law that it illegally regulates, 53G 10-205. Rites of conscience and religious belief are sincerely held and aren't mere preferences. Some are using what-if hypotheticals to discourage students from even exercising their consciences to begin with. What if a kid refrains from participating in math because math violates his conscience? An absurd claim like this has no standing because that's not conscience at this point, and the law provides for checks on frivolous claims. So, if a child says doing math on days that end in Y violates his religion, the law requires that the school contact a parent who can act as a check on the child. And on the crazy chance a parent says, yeah, that's Johnny's religion, I guess, the school need not recognize this far-fetched, insincere claim as conscience, as was confirmed in the case of Heart of Atlanta Motel. However, if the claim is a religious sentiment or inspired by a sincere and internal sense of right and wrong, schools must err on the side of conscience. Children who refrain from participating in their own indoctrination aren't disrupting or hurting anyone else. They are just protecting their own minds and hearts. Who could be against that? It's undeniable that ideologies are being taught as indisputable facts. For a school to force a student to affirm false ideas for a grade or graduation is not just wrong, it's unconstitutional. There is no state compelling interest that, or state interest compelling enough to justify requiring students to violate their consciences or religious beliefs. Micromanaging children's consciences is an unjustifiable use of this board's time and resources, especially with, when student academic achievement is so low statewide. R 277 700 did need to be amended, but only to be made consistent with the new conscience law, so Higher Ground recommends that the board adopt a simple amendment, like the board staff draft one. A student or parent may refrain from participation consistent with Section 53G 10-205. Rites of conscience and religious belief merit higher protections from the state. A bare desire for perfect uniformity in the application of a law cannot be an end in itself or religious freedom as we know it is dead, and conscience killed with it. This board must avoid the arrogance of governance that fails to recognize that, quote, "In the United States, the free exercise of religion is not a mere policy preference to be traded against other policy preferences. It is a fundamental right," end quote. Whether it's graduation or grading policies, you'd have a hard time convincing a judge that any of these are so compelling as to justify taking precedence over constitutional rights. Children do not check their consciences at the school door. R 277 700, as amended, can deny a student the benefit of graduating if a student refrains from mastering a graduation requirement. That itself may be the source of a violation of conscience or religious belief. Such a denial is unconstitutional, as in the case of Trinity Lutheran, quote, "The government imposes a substantial burden when it withholds a public benefit because of religious belief, practice, or identity," end quote. Graduation is one such benefit that cannot be withheld. It is this board's sworn constitutional duty to fully uphold the rites of conscience and religious belief in the public square we call school. Conscience and religious belief apply to and protect one hundred percent of all students. To amend these rights to be anything less is educational malpractice, which can't be committed without a reckoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, and we'll invite to come, the remaining speakers to come to the podium, uh, is Elizabeth Hawks with Parents Taking Action, uh, and then she'll be followed by Erin Bullen with the Platform Republicans PAC. Again, we invite the remaining speakers to come to the podium on your, on the left side of the, the room, yes. Push the little person on the mic. There's a little, you want to push the button on the mic with the little person on it? There you go.
Okay.
We don't have extra time. We have a full agenda. Sorry, if I misstated your name, I'm sorry, but Elizabeth, go ahead.
Elizabeth Jukes, yes. I am here representing a group of parents from Utah County called Parents Taking Action. We oppose the proposed rule R 277 700-7. It seems incredible to most parents that a law protecting our children's rights of conscience and religious beliefs is even necessary, but our legislators knew they needed to write such a law to keep our state and local school boards in check and needed to, and protect the natural rights of our children. The law as it stands is crystal clear in protection of Utah State students' constitutional and natural rights. Our state constitution, Article One, Section Four, Religious Liberty, states, "The rites of conscience shall never be infringed." In addition, Section 53G-10-204 states that parents have the right and primary responsibility to educate their own children, and the role of the state and local governments is to support and assist parents in fulfilling that responsibility. According to the board's proposed rule, a reasonable academic accommodation is to be established when a core standard is in violation of a parent or student's conscience. Who does, who determines what is a reasonable accommodation when the requirement is to demonstrate a mastery of core standards? In order to be promoted to the next grade, uh, the next course or grade level, what recourse do parents really have when the core standards go directly against their beliefs and conscience? The vagueness of the language reasonable accommodation is an open door to an abuse of power which we parents will not allow. Remember that we, the people, are the authority, not you. It is a sad indictment on Utah's standard of education that our state is graduating eighty-eight percent of students, but only forty-four percent are proficient in language arts, forty percent in math, and forty-five percent in, in science, as of last year. Um, but a student who doesn't ma, master core standards through academic accommodations when he requests exemption based on his moral beliefs is not allowed to graduate. We would like to remind you that your job as the state board is to support educators in teaching our children wisdom for the good of a free society. It is not to indoctrinate, nor to build a willing and compliant workforce. A workforce will be a happy side effect of teaching wisdom. It is not the end goal. So don't teach them what to think but how to think for themselves and discern between truth and error. We parents have seen violations of rites of conscience in our schools based on the teaching of core standards. Here are a few examples. One Spanish Fork parent reported that in 2013, her fifth grader was assigned to write argumentative essays on Utah Compose. She was told to choose and write a defense for her side of the argument, but she was given slanted resources to research and write her paper. An abundance of well-written articles and journals on one side of the argument and only one poorly-written article on the other side. This happened with almost every essay she was assigned, and the strong side most often did not align with the parents' beliefs. Students should be taught how to research, investigate, and think for themselves, not be handed a skewed argument from the onset. At another Spanish Fork Elementary in 2021, the faculty and all of the students were expected to use another student's alternate name and preferred pronouns. This is compelled speech and directly violates First Amendment rights of speech, conscience, and religious beliefs. It also teaches young minds to disregard objective truth, the truth that gender is an essential and unchangeable characteristic. This experience caused this parent to pull her own children from traditional public school and enroll them at a charter school. Early this year, one parent took her story to the news to warn others of the violations of conscience against her daughter at a Nebo middle school. She was assigned a climate change project involving eating insects and writing an argumentative essay in favor of humans eating insects for their protein instead of cows, which some experts say are destroying this ozone layer with methane gas. The problem besides the disgusting snack was that she was not permitted to disagree with the premise of the assignment. Her mom had a back and forth with the principal and other school staff, but nothing was done. Next, her story was picked up by the media where she further explained that the teacher was pushing an agenda. Eventually, the student was given an alternate assignment, but throughout the whole ordeal, she received such, so much backlash from staff and bullying from other kids that her mom pulled her from school. Um, how much time do I have? Okay. These are just a few of the soul-shaking experiences our kids are up against with the state having the final say in what is taught when our children feel that something is off at school. I urge you to drop this amendment and leave this law as it stands for the sake of our children, not to mention the threat of litigation for breaking the law by creating the rule in this first place. James Madison asserted that conscience is the most sacred of all property. You are in a position to protect the sacred property. It's up to you to make the right decision.
Thank you. Mr. Bullen, you're up next. He'll be followed by Melanie Mortensen.
Hello, board members, and thank you for giving me the time to address you today. My name is Erin Bullen, and I'm a member of the board of the Platform Republicans PAC, who I am speaking on behalf of today. A few months ago, I was attending a family reunion in the Bear Lake area. During a conversation with my brother, we began discussing the need for research by the CDC into conditions such as autism. We were quickly interrupted by my brother's eleven-year-old son, who naturally thought that he was invited to our adult conversation. The interjection, he blurted out, was profound in its emotional content, but not for its insight or knowledge. He said, "But shouldn't we only fund getting rid of climate change? Because that is going to be the end of the planet and kill the most people." Just like that. Well, this completely derailed our conversation. My brother looked at me half embarrassed and half horrified that his son believed such a thing. You see, me and my brother share very similar beliefs on most topics, particularly on climate change, and he knew that his son did not learn to be a climate alarmist from him. He quickly asked his son, "Now, where did you hear that?" And the answer was short and without hesitation, "School." Well, you might be wondering what this random story has anything to do with 277 700, but for me, it has everything to do with it. Not too long ago, the members of this board voted in favor of supplemental science standards, or CED standards. The local media made a big deal about ensuring every standard referencing climate change remained untouched, and the result was CED standards replete with discussions on climate change in five different categories. As you might imagine, I take issues with some of these standards, but not because I do not believe in climate change. I actually do. And I believe that climate change is a real problem. I just do not believe that it is a large problem. This is because I'm not an alarmist. I recognize the realistic impacts of global warming, according to the IPCC itself, are not catastrophic, nor do they require government regulation or massive government spending. In fact, if we became a totalitarian country tomorrow and ended all carbon emissions and spent the entire budget of our country, we would only reduce the expected temperature increase worldwide by zero point three three degrees Fahrenheit by the year 2100. This means the temperature would increase by seven point zero seven degrees Fahrenheit instead of four point, seven point four degrees Fahrenheit that it would otherwise increase to by 2100. That is not going to be taught in our schools, is it? And this is why the code of right of conscience is so important to me. I do not want my son, who is eleven years old, to end up like his cousin, uh, thinking that the world is going to end. I simply do not trust that these CED standards are not going to provide a platform for those exact concepts to be taught to my child. I personally would utilize the standard, uh, utilize the code 53G 10-205, um, for a standard like Environmental Science Strand 4.3, which asks students to communicate information on how the state management plans and government legislation have reduced the impacts of climate change. The examples the standard gives are reduction of fossil fuel use, criminalization of dumping waste, or outlawing the use of fluorocar, chlorofluorocarbons. In other words, we are teaching our children that the government needs to solve this. The issue in this case is the standard itself in its entirety, but according to the amendment, uh, draft four, uh, 277 700 that we are discussing today, my student will not graduate unless they master that very standard that violates my child's right of conscience. Not only that, but according to this version, the teacher is not required to provide accommodation. They only may do so. So if the school decides that my right of conscience violation is absurd, which is highly likely, they could simply refuse accommodation, and my child would be punished through lack of promotion to the next course. This gives power entirely to the school and strips power from parents and students. Now, I know why you sought to amend draft one, and your reasons are not without merit. The code as it stood, along with draft one, gave power entirely to students and parents. In extreme circumstances, you were concerned students would skip large amounts of standards with the permission of their parents, and school, and schools would be forced to graduate them. Now, while I think, I do not think this is a realistic scenario, it is understandable that you would try to prevent this, but there are much more reasonable ways to ensure that this does not occur. For instance, if a parent and student wants accommodation to complete an alternative activity or alternative standard, they could be required to explain the reason the material violates their right of conscience. It's understandably hard to provide an alternative that does not violate right of conscience when you do not let, know what that violation is in the first place. There could also be a limit on the number of alternatives that are needing to be offered for accommodation before no, further accommodation is required. Um, I would also reference, uh, Ms. Wilbur's presentation where these right of conscience violations can be denied. Solutions of the nature I just described would shift the balance of power for right of conscience violations to a middle ground between parents and students and the school. But as it currently stands, 277 700 gives power entirely to the schools and completely undermines the intent of 53G 10-205, and that gives parents like me zero recourse to avoid our small children thinking that the world is going to end because of climate change. Thank you.
Ms. Mortensen, and then April DeSpain.
Good afternoon, board, and thank you for being here. I thought we only had two minutes, so I will be short and to the point. My name is Melanie Mortensen. I am here representing Utah Parents United. We appreciate the inclusion in this rule of parents working with LEAs to address issues that arise with curriculum. Draft one is our favorite in that it protects our rights as parents to guide, protect, and educate our children. Constitutionally, you cannot usurp a parent's right to waive the standard, and draft one made it clear that any issues had to be consistent with 205. Our concern with the current draft is that it appears, as Mr. Bullen mentioned, to place higher value on the decision of the LEA versus that of the parents. If there is to be an imbalance of authority where a child's education is concerned, the greater weight should be on the part of the parent. We anticipate that both parties, the LEAs and parents, will make a good faith effort to find a reasonable alternative that supports a student's right of conscience and allows for core standards to be met. On the rare circumstance that both parties cannot find a solution, we would suggest that the USBE send the parent liaison who could help facilitate a compromise. We would also suggest that the core standard itself is the issue. The rule should reflect that by acknowledging in Section Seven that if the core standard itself is the cause of the objection, a similar standard can be used that does not cause an objection, or the parent can waive the standard based on 53G 10-205. Thank you very much.
Ms. DeSpain, and then, uh, Jessica Bianco.
My name is April Wilde DeSpain, and I'm a mother to six children from Murray. Over the past three years, I have come to USBE to give public comment many times. The whole reason I got majorly involved in education issues is because my family has personally experienced the public education system's violation of our religious views and rites of conscience over and over again. This needs to stop. As a mother, it is mine and my husband's job to determine what worldview, religious views, and values we want our children to be taught. It is not a teacher's responsibility or right, nor a school's job, to force certain worldviews on my children. I'm grateful for the passing of HB 348 and that it seeks to protect my rights and my children's rights to view life as we believe is correct. I hope that USBE will recognize the important intent of this bill and honor what it means. The most basic of our rights, as granted to us by the U.S. Constitution and described in the Declaration of Independence, includes the inalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Without a doubt, the pursuit of happiness includes determining our family, our own families' worldviews, religious views, and values. As a governing body, it is USBE's responsibility to honor these rights unequivocally. Today, as just one example of this problem, I want to address the issue of ed tech and computer modules that do, that don't allow students to move on to the next question module or level unless students answer questions that are based not on empirical fact, but on biased ideological worldviews that may violate a student's or parent's religious beliefs or rites of conscience. Making students demonstrate their competency of core standards through use of inflexible computer modules does not make allowance for religious beliefs or rites of conscience. That is why we need USBE's rule to honor the intent behind the rites of conscience code. After much effort on my part to remedy these issues, I have unfortunately but realistically concluded that public schools in Murray School District will not honor my family's religious views or rites of conscience, and for that reason, I currently homeschool all six of my children instead of enrolling them in a public school district that intentionally and repeatedly violates our rites of conscience. I hope USBE will learn from my experience and seek to uphold what the founding fathers laid out in the formation of our constitutional republic. Please respect the rights of families to believe according to our own values, even and especially in public schools. Thank you.
Hello, um, members of the state school board. My name is Laurel Fetzer. I'm from Murray. I find it interesting that I spoke about this same topic a few months ago. I think there is a problem with the board respecting their role in governing schools and letting parents and their kids govern their, their own lives. Um, I want to encourage you to pull the newly amended language of R 277 700 and just leave it out. Draft one is a good way to do it. The code 53G 10-205 is for the LEAs to implement and for you to focus on your job. Just leave it alone. Parents and kids of all religions, faiths, and of no faith can choose when their rites of conscience have been violated. This law instructs the board that it shall make rules consistent with 53G 10-205. That's all. Um... That's all. I want you to know that a lot of this liberal, these liberal policies are not only affecting public schools, but private schools, too. I have a sister who has left the public schools because of all of these rights of conscience violations and has gone to private schools. And in her school, they are now also having problems with their rights of conscience. They've changed their math to a struggle session math called open up or Sabbath. And her kids dislike it so much. They went and talked with the principal, and he was the one who brought in the new math and gave it lots of praises for how wonderful it is and how the kids are all doing so well. Well, the kids aren't doing well, and she pulled her kids from the math and is using tutors and other online schooling resources to help her children understand and enjoy math. The kids in their classes come up after school and ask them for help because they aren't understanding the math in their struggle session math. We joked that my sister gets to pay twice for the violation of rights of conscience. Please do draft one of, what is it? R277-700, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amy Warren, and then up next will be Kim Chandler.
Thank you, Board members, for the time. My name is Amy Warren. I'm the mother of two children in Granite School District. I also work with families and schools throughout all of the area that I live in. I am speaking kind of the opposite of everyone else, kind of in favor of this rule. Not kind of, yes, in favor of the rule. Our schools have to have standards. They have to have graduation requirements, or diplomas are worthless. If we can just opt out of any requirement, any standard we want, we try to take that diploma to a university, they won't accept it. And we have to be able to set these standards and uphold these standards. The rule as written gives us the opportunity, gives parents the opportunity to voice their conscience, but do some of the legwork themselves rather than saying, hey, I disagree. Teachers find an answer. The parent that disagrees is asked to do the work and work with the teacher to find an alternative solution. I find it hard, as we were talking about parents' rights and they need to do all of these things. Well, as parents, we, it is our responsibility to take on the education of our children. If we have a problem with something being taught, then we have the responsibility to bring it to the teachers, find an alternate way to prove that they can meet the standard, and to teach at home. We are just as responsible to teach our children at home as our children, as our teachers are to teach our students at school. We have to be able to uphold graduation requirements and standards to be able to have any value in a diploma that comes from the state of Utah. So I would encourage you to uphold the rule as written. Thank you.
Kim Chandler, and then we'll move to our Zoom participants after that.
Thank you, Board. My name is Kim Chandler. For transparency, I am a member of the Board of Education in Granite School District, but I am here speaking on my own behalf today in opposition to the amendment to R277-700 that has been approved by the board. I am opposed to the amended rule approved by the board because section 53G 10205 of Utah Code requires that the USB rule, USBE rule be consistent with this section of code. As well-intentioned as your justifications may seem, the rule that you have approved is inconsistent with code and therefore violates Utah law. It also imposes limits on the constitutional guarantee of the free exercise of religious beliefs and rights of conscience. It does this by permitting schools to require that students demonstrate mastery of core standards when, as has been described, those standards themselves may in fact be the very thing that violates religious belief or right of conscience. Again, the board voted earlier this year to retain within supplementary science and engineering standards, as an example ideologies like climate change and evolution. Additionally, ideologies under the guise of ethnic studies and SEL, which incorporates elements of DEI, CRT, sexual orientation, and gender identity ideology, have also been embedded into standards and curriculum that claims to align with core standards. It is critical to understand that flatly requiring mastery of these standards constitutes an infringement on the rights of conscience that the Utah Constitution strictly forbids. In Article One, Section Four, the very first sentence here reads very simply, "The rights of conscience shall never be infringed." In case it is unclear, the following is a definition of the word "never," according to the Merriam-Webster dictionary. Not ever. At no time. Not in any degree. Not under any condition. This board has no authority to redefine the word "never" to mean sometimes. Let it be a reminder to the board that to vote to support anything that overrides the Constitution in any way is a violation of your oath of office. I urge you to stand up and do the right thing and correct the error made in amending R277-700 and accept instead the path suggested by higher ground. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to our participants on Zoom. The first speaker we have is Karab Bartholomew. Karab?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here today to oppose the amendments put forth by Board Member Wood because they are just not consistent with 53G 10205 with Utah Code and its Constitution. Choosing to not ensure our children have access to packets that do not infringe on their deeply held religious beliefs or rights of conscience is punishing them for not complying. Regardless of the intent, this will create repressive tolerance where you protect some at the expense of others. The truth is, is that we shouldn't even be having this conversation. You guys are in between a rock and a hard place. If schools focused on the individual rather than the collective, as has been the policy in the past, if the goal was excellence rather than pushing a progressive agenda that teaches down with the systems of oppression while using the very systems to oppress our Christian, Muslim, Sikh, and other religious children. I am aware that the board feels our beliefs, that some on the board feel our beliefs are old fashioned, but that does not mean our children should be shamed or starved of academic excellence. I do not want to have to deprogram my child from neo-racist rhetoric or from another belief I do not believe to be rooted in what is true or good. I don't want to tell my children to make themselves small and to live by obvious lies. Objective truth should not be controversial. I'm not without compassion that some of you have felt that you have to cower or comply, but to me, that's a failure of faith. And faith and obedience to God are something that I and many other religious people hold dearly enough to die for. But homeschool is not an option for everyone. Several of you support teaching what very well may be falsehoods instead of facts. You are attempting to recolonize our children, to change their views, to make student activists for your causes. And I think we only need to look at other countries. Okay. I think we only need to look at countries like Israel and Gaza to see where that leads. Please do the right thing. Please protect our children. This is not kind. This is abuse of our children, and HB 10205 is the only way that we can protect our constitutional rights against abusers.
Thank you. Next up is Heather Fry. Ms. Fry, are you available? You need to unmute. We can't hear you. Ms. Fry?
There you go.
There you go.
Hello, yes, I apologize. Thank you. Board of Education, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Heather Fry. I have been deeply troubled by the overreach of the bureaucracies of education, and the more I learn, the more I know I must stand up and speak out. A huge contributor of mental illness in students is caused by students being forced, compelled, coerced, or required to violate their conscience or religious beliefs in order to complete any assignment, not be penalized or discriminated against by their teacher or peers, and now with the newly amended language of R277-700, in order to advance to the next grade or be able to graduate. It is religious discrimination to require a student to demonstrate mastery of a core standard that violates their or their parent's religious belief or conscience. It is religious discrimination to deny a student a public benefit that is available to other students, namely a graduation certificate. If qualifying for that certificate requires the student to violate their conscience or religious beliefs, the board needs to stay in their lane and stop trying to chip away at conscience. 53G 10205 is perfect the way it is. USBE does not have the right to add qualifiers in the rules in an attempt to reinterpret the clear meaning of the code as, so that it better suits the goals of USBE when those goals run counter to our constitutional rights. That code intent is to protect the interests and rights of parents and students from an overreaching and infringing school system. The board has bigger problems to deal with than going after kids' conscience.
That's your time, please wrap up.
Please repeal the amendment made to section seven, subsection four, and simply refer back to code, refer schools to code 53G. Thank you so much for your time, your dedication, and your loyalty to our, our students.
Thank you. Next up is Chelsea Hope. Ms. Hope, can you please unmute and give your comment? Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. I am speaking against the rule as well. I agree. I understand that this rule falls under Article 10, Section 3 of the Utah Constitution, but it cannot violate Utah Constitution Article 1, Section 4, which is what HB 38, I'm sorry, 348 falls under. Under HB 348, it states that the school can absolutely not, let's see here, I'm sorry, "They may not require the student or the student's parent to explain, defend, or justify the student's or student's parent's religious belief or rights of conscience. They may also not penalize or discriminate against a student for refraining from such courses." This rule directly violates and contradicts basically every line in this bill under Article 1 of the Constitution. If a parent decides to object to a course, they are still required to teach the course to advance in education. That is, by very definition, a penalization, which is now not allowed. This is now not, not an authority that is allowed under your scope of jurisdiction for this bill. There are certain, I'd like to give an example, like DEI, we have pornography and sexual immorality, teaching more than one gender in the schools now. That goes against Christian belief of two genders and sexual immorality. We should not be coercing, forcing, or influencing behavior or belief systems of students, but rather sticking to math arithmetic and reading. Let's see here, "Our Constitution was created to place boundaries on government and elected officials. Rights are reserved to the individual. When the duties of the board, which have in current decades been confused for authority, collide with parental authority and rights, constitutional rights of the parent and individual should always prevail." Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Cheryl Allred?
Thank you for allowing me to speak on this important matter. Please listen to the parents and educators and fellow children as we speak for our children if they cannot speak for themselves in this matter without retaliation while it's--
Ms. Allred, we're having a little trouble hearing you. Can you speak any closer to the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
"Our students should always be able to say no and leave if a lecturer, educator, speaker, behaves in a manner that violates their conscience, makes them anxious, depressed, ill, or otherwise goes against their personal beliefs. Students in Utah Public Schools should be allowed a safe learning environment where the U.S. Constitution, Utah State Law, and their God-given rights are upheld and safeguarded. The rights of conscience shall never be infringed. Respecting the rights of conscience and religious beliefs is a fundamental principle of a civilized society. I have reported many educators in my district who are violating Utah State Law and their students' moral beliefs. My district has done nothing to stop these violations from occurring even after these reports. The only defense our students have is to say no and leave the classroom. They should be allowed to do so without fear of retaliation or punishment. They should be allowed to call their parents and have their parents become involved to support them so their learning environment become toxic, unsafe, hostile, or otherwise go against their morals and beliefs. This new amendment now has the students further being bullied and harassed into defending why they feel it necessary to leave the classroom. The educator who is discussing topics that violate their conscience is now in charge of subjectively assigning alternative lessons involving administration to further humiliate and harass the students into accepting assignments that go against their morals. I will show one example here as a reference of why this is so important for our students. March 2023, Orem, Utah. Educator uses his lecture time to discuss his sexual fetishes, fetishes, procrastination, drugs, drug use, hormones, therapy sessions, and his son's mental health with multiple students in classrooms. Many students asked to leave the lecture as their PTSD, anxiety, depression, and mental health were being triggered. They did not feel safe while this educator used the lecture to discuss how entertaining this was for him. Many students asked to be treated in the wellness room. Instead, they should have been given a lecture--
That's your time, please wrap up.
This is just one of many examples our students face daily. Please protect them and allow them to follow their conscience and not have the educators violate them in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Brianna Hugh.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So my name's Brianna Hugh. I'm the parent of four students in Utah schools, one in elementary, junior high, high school, and college, so we cover the gamut. I just want to share a quick experience that I had in another state with one of my children. When they were in elementary school, they were learning about the Middle Passage and about the realities of chattel slavery. As part of that unit, the teacher planned a reenactment of a slave plantation, and my child, who was black, had been assigned to the role of a slave. I emailed the teacher and asked for my child to be exempted from this assignment. I was well aware of the burden that's added to the teacher, which is why I suggested having my child go to the library and read a book about a black child's experience during slavery. I also said that I would help with a book report at home to make sure we covered the content. Though I strongly disagreed with the assignment and did eventually succeed in getting that incredibly offensive assignment removed from the curriculum, I realized that it was my job as the parent to ensure that my child demonstrated the understanding of the history of the antebellum time period and what conditions were like for enslaved people. Though I strongly disagreed with the assignment, I had no expectation that the teacher would change her lesson plan just for me and my child, nor did I expect that the solution to this problem would be something exclusively covered by the teacher or the school. We worked together and had several great conversations about the substitute assignment and eventually got rid of that assignment. I'm also a teacher and was also part of the Utah PTA Legislative Action Committee last spring in which Representative Atkins shared her bill, HB 348, and addressed some questions. As a teacher, I asked her the following questions. How would the student demonstrate mastery if they didn't participate in the unit? How would my school comply with the requirement that a student not be punished without their approval? Basically, she said that the answer to all of these questions is that the parents would be responsible for ensuring their child got credit and working with the school.
That's your time, please wrap up.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Gail Rosika?
My name is Gail Rosika. I'm with Utah Eagle Forum. I, it was my understanding that because I represent a large organization in this state that I would have more time. Anyway, I just wanted to point out that I have been involved for many years with this very section of the code. In fact, was involved in the original writing of that code, just with the idea that the rights of conscience shall never be infringed, even on the children in the school, just as it says in our Constitution. I was very happy to see when that Representative Atkins had made these changes because the law as it was, as we passed it many years ago, have just been ignored because it was, I guess it wasn't simple enough, and, and parents just were not aware. This language makes, is simple, and how can parents not understand when it says that, that the school, you know, referring to the school response, that the students refrain from participation in schools due to the student's or the student's parents' religious belief or rights of conscience? I think that is great language that all parents can understand, and I was so grateful to see that, that those changes had been made. But I am concerned now because there are things that are, that are being changed that, from this original bill, from, from Representative Atkins. One of them that I'm very concerned about is that the definition of reasonable accommodation-- One of them that I'm very concerned about is that the definition of reasonable accommodations when it says that the parent or the student are able to exercise parental or student rights. I can't even imagine that, and I would ask you not to put that language in there. Parents, children should not, how can children's rights compete with parental rights? There are no parental rights under those conditions.
That's your time. Please wrap up.
I would just ask you to leave the bill as it is. I think those of us that have worked on this law for years would be in agreement with that, and I am grateful for the way it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Final Zoom speaker is Corey Pensabini.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well said on the name. Thank you. That was impressive. My name is Corey Pensabini. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, USBE, for all the work that you put in. I appreciate you guys. You know, my concern as a parent of seven, as well as someone who's been active in the education community as a teacher and other roles, the concern would really be kind of going back to the understanding that the parents really are the ones who are primarily responsible for their children's education. And when we start to switch language, like we are in the modifications that have been offered in version four here, draft four, we start to really bring those things into question, and the schools already have a tremendous amount of power, and we have to be careful because there's supposed to be checks and balances. And so certainly agree that some of the concerns might be valid, that parents might be unreasonable, or students might also be unreasonable. That being said, it doesn't change the fact that the legal ramifications of the way language is written sways the balance of power either for or against a particular group. And in this particular case, the wording of the recently adopted version, draft number four, from Ms. Woodson, would seem to sway that balance back into the hands of the school. So I want to be careful about that. We want to support parents and their right of freedom and conscience and their right of religious freedom. And to me, just, and again, thank you for considering this, but one of the things that we're to be reminded of, it's not freedom from religion, it's freedom of religion. And that's an important distinction to recognize and understand for all of us. So again, I would vote against it, I would say to keep it as it has been, and let's keep the conversation, the power in the parents' hands, and the conversation open and dialogue. And I do believe most parents can be reasonably, as was addressed very early, can be very reasonably worked with in order to accommodate if it is something that's actually there. So again, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Looks like we should have just enough time for the three people that signed up to give comment here at the meeting. We'll go first to Representative Lyman, two minutes each at the podium.
Thank you, board. Appreciate the chance to comment. HB 348, which was passed earlier this year in March by Representative Acton and Senator Kennedy, says, "A student's parents may waive the student's participation in any aspect of school that violates the student or the parent's religious belief or right of conscience." And then it also adds this line that most bills have, "The board shall make rules consistent with this section." And then this is the rule that the board has yet, says if, and it says a parent objects, and that parent is crossed out, says, "A student refrains from a course, the parent and the school may work together to establish a reasonable accommodation." Often, legislation comes through that is nebulous. This is not one of those times. The legislation is really clear, and I would appreciate if the board just stuck to the legislation that was passed by the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Marilyn Larson.
Thank you for letting me be here. My name is Marilyn Larson. I am, this cute lady, Patty Norman, said, "Who are you representing?" And I said, "Me." I'm a grandma. I'm a mom. I'm a mom, a grandma, grandmother. I'm a teacher. I'm a stalwart advocate for freedom, our Constitution, parental rights, and protection of our prosperity. As far as I'm concerned, and as far as I know, the administrative rules cannot and do not supersede and must not contradict the statutes adopted by the state legislator, legislation. Does that make sense? So we should not even be having this conversation. You should not be amending anything without the permission of the state legislation. You, as a school board, I believe that you were voted in by your constituents, and I use that loosely because people don't even understand what that means on the grass level. You're voted in by your people. And if you did not tell the people that voted you in that when you got in, that you would succumb to voting for amendments that clearly change the education as it is set by the legislation and by our Constitution, you should not vote for anything that is a yes that changes those amendments. Does that make sense, I hope? I actually represent hundreds and hundreds, now that I think about it, people across the state of Utah who are very unhappy, very disgruntled, very unengaged with the Board of Education because of the stuff that has been shoved down St. George's throat, Granite School District, Jordan School District, people all over. They want you--
That's your time.
--to step to the podium and stick with what we had in our education and protect our Constitution.
Please wrap up.
Thank you.
Final speaker is Dave Burton.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and give feedback. This board, like all governing entities, they prefer to have as much decision-making authority, ability, and flexibility to administer how they see fit. You may feel that the state law restricts the flexibility of this board. Please understand that when you create rules that circumvent the law, you incentivize the legislature to impose laws that are even more restrictive because you push them to that point. As a consequence, your flexibility to create rules as you see fit is diminished. As a result, you need to consider yourselves as a cause of your decreasing autonomy. Because of this behavior, you are driving the legislature to implement audits and policing measures on teachers, schools, and school boards to make sure that the laws that they pass are implemented as they intend. Leave the bill as it is and not amend it to avoid additional stringent state law oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will conclude this portion of the public hearing. The board appreciates the public's input on this important issue. The board secretary and the hearing officer will assemble the complete hearing record for the board, which will be provided to board members for their consideration prior to the board's November 2 meeting. I want to remind you that the public still has the opportunity to provide written comments for the board's consideration. These written comments should be submitted to rule comments@schools.utah.gov by close of business on October 31, 2023. This hearing is adjourned. Thank you.